I guess in an upright position, we're gonna call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of Bellflower City Council, Monday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. It's five thirty-three in the evening. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santiness?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
All right, now that we've got that, Ryan, let's have the closed session items, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council is recessing to closed session to meet with item, regarding item three A, Conference Real Property Negotiator for the parcels listed on the agenda.
All right, does anybody have any recusals or?
Do I have to recuse myself?
Are you on the list of recusals? All right, so Wendy will not be participating, but the rest of us will now retire to closed session. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, at seven oh one in the evening. And we just concluded our meeting with, in closed session, and there are no reportable actions. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santiness?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
At this time, we're going to have the invocation, and that will be offered by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton. And the pledge of allegiance will be offered by Len Gurecki, Assistant City Manager and Director of Public Works. So please stand at this time.
Please bow your heads. Oh gracious God, thank you for all you do. Please bless our actions here tonight and assist us in building a strong and caring community. Bless our residents and help us take care of the less unfortunate. May you lend us your wisdom to find some solutions for the issues that come before us. We thank you for the opportunity to help others and the opportunity to try to improve the way of life. We ask for your protection and blessings on our military men and women. May they always return safely to their families. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Please address the flag, place your right hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you, Mr. Gurecki and Mr. Dutton.
You're welcome.
We're gonna bring now forth the city announcements. And I'll start with the City of Bellflower and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department have teamed up with Kaiser Permanente to host a Drug Take Back Initiative event, and that's gonna be held on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, that's this coming Saturday, from ten AM to two PM at the Kaiser Permanente Bellflower Medical Office. That's located ninety-four hundred East Rosecrans, here in the City of Bellflower. The collection site entrance will be indicated on Clark Avenue. Local residents can turn in unused or expired medication anonymously for proper disposal by the Drug Reinforcement Administration, that's the DEA. The event is free to the public, and if you would like more information about this, you can go to www.kp.org. All right, Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. To help support our local business owners, the City of Bellflower is highlighting local businesses in its monthly e-citizen newsletter. Share business updates, special events, holiday celebrations, and more by emailing your information to the economicdevelopmentdeb@bellflower.org. For more information on the business resources, please call five six two eight oh four one four two four at extension twenty-ten. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Wendy Morse?
Thank you, Mayor. Enrollment for the Parks and Recreation Aqua Fit classes opens this week on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth. Classes are held on Fridays beginning May third and run through May thirty-first. Aqua Fit offers beginners and immersive water impact class, beginners and immersive water impact class designed to introduce participants to a refreshing cardio workout. These classes welcome adults and seniors of all fitness levels. Classes are held in the outdoor pool at the Bellflower Aquatic Center, located at Thompson Park. For more information, call the Aquatic Center at five six two eight six six two zero one five or visit the city's website, www.bellflower.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites the business community to its Business-to-Business Casual Connections event this Thursday, April twenty-fifth, from eleven-thirty AM to twelve-thirty PM. The chamber will also be hosting its monthly morning mingle next Tuesday, April thirtieth, from nine AM to ten AM. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at five six two eight six seven one seven four four. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Santiness?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. With the recent rainfall, the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District reminds residents to inspect their yards for any standing water. Remember, no standing water means no mosquitoes. Even small containers like bottle caps can become breeding grounds for hundreds of mosquitoes. If you are being bugged by mosquitoes, a service request to the Vector Control District can be submitted at www.gla mosquito.org. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santiness. So that concludes our announcements, and we're gonna move into presentations now. And the first one's going to be presenting to Donate Life Month. And I'd like to invite Maria Jimenez to One Legacy up for the presentation riser, and she'll receive the proclamation from the City Council for Donate Life Month. So if you'd please meet us over here on council colleagues, and I will meet you there. So I have here a proclamation commemorating Donate for Life, and I'll give you a few excerpts here. And it says here that organ, eye, tissue, bone marrow, blood donations are life-giving acts that are recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. More than a hundred and six thousand individuals nationwide, and more than twenty thousand in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list on the average, and seventeen people die each day on that list. So this is a very noble and impressive number that we need to think about. People's lives are being lost because of not being able to receive organs. Being a registered donor does not impact your quality of life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency, but will help save another life. California residents interested in saving the life through kidney donation may visit www.livingdonation.california.org, and you can sign up to be a participant in this program. Therefore, I, Dan Coops, the Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim April two thousand twenty-four as DMV slash Donate Life California Month. Encourage all Californians to check yes when applying or renewing your driver's license or ID cards or by signing up at the www.donatelifeincalifornia.org. And you can also do that at www.donatevida california.org. And it's signed by Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, Councilmember Wendy Morse, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and of course, Councilmember Victor Santiness. So this is, yeah, you know, Sunny, we'll do a half and half here. But anyway, Sunny signed it too, so, in his best penmanship. And so this is for you, and you're welcome to say a few words.
Sure, so my name is Maria Jimenez. I'm an ambassador for One Legacy, which is the OPO here in the county. We do seven counties. I am a volunteer. My connection to donation is a very, very personal one. I lost my son at twenty-two years old to meningitis, and he has said yes to organ donation. So he saved the lives of three moms with eight children. And we always say that it's not just the recipient that gets the gift of life, but it's also their family and their communities. So I am very blessed that I can do this, and I hope that sharing his story I inspire and he inspires other people to say yes. One organ donor can save up to eight lives, enhance the lives of more than seventy-five people by tissue donation, and actually restore the gift of sight to two individuals. So I hope that you consider becoming an organ donor. You can do it through DMV, or you can do it through donatelife.orgCalifornia. And I am so thankful and grateful for the City of Bellflower to join us on this mission. And I hope that this starts a relationship with us that we can go ahead and pursue in the future to bring that education and awareness to your community. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. For the second presentation, the city's Information Technology Manager, Sergio Todorov, will provide an update on the city's information technology. Sergio, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna do a quick intro for Sergio, and then he'll proceed. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. IT Manager Sergio Todorov will update you on the city's information technology systems. Before he begins, though, I want to highlight Sergio's efforts. In just nine months, he has transformed our IT infrastructure for the better already, identifying critical operation deficiencies, enhancing security, prioritizing user experience, and paving the way for future improvements. Throughout the presentation tonight, you'll learn about IT concerns that have already been addressed and those critical moving forward. His vision for IT's role in city services and commitment to technical excellence are commendable. We're fortunate to have him leading our IT initiatives, and with that, I'll turn it over to Sergio.
Thank you, PJ. Hello, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council and residents of Bellflower. In two thousand twenty-three, the City Council recognized the need to upgrade IT systems due to issues in different areas. Subsequently, I was hired and tasked with assessing and addressing these issues. Additionally, upon the arrival of our new City Manager, Ryan Smooth, in January two thousand twenty-four, I was assigned to create a report on the status of IT infrastructure and presented to him, City Council, and the residents. Tonight, I will be presenting this report to you all. To better understand the overall direction, I will start by listing the goals we have. Our first goal is to improve uptime. This means to ensure uninterrupted operation of our systems and networks, enabling us to continue delivering essential services to the residents of the city. Next, we focus on security, of course. We make sure that our information and systems are safe from cyber threats. We aim to enhance user experience. We want to make things easier for everyone by having the right equipment, software, and simpler ways of doing things. Finally, we want to welcome new technology. We want to create a culture in Bellflower that encourages using new technology to help employees and the public. Before we dive into the current state of IT infrastructure, let's examine the feedback I've collected. The key takeaways from employees include, we mostly got positive feedback about IT support. Our help desk responded quickly and fixed problems effectively, as seen on the right side of this slide. Phone system issues were frequently mentioned in the internal user feedback. I will talk more about this topic later in the presentation. Many employees expressed interest in participating in various training sessions to enhance their skills, which is a great news. I've also collected feedbacks from department heads, which includes software upgrades. Department heads express concerns with some applications used internally which are out of date, inefficient, and require upgrades. Software integration, department heads seek better software integration, allowing different platforms to work more seamlessly together. Lastly, department heads are looking to improve efficiency by implementing software application and automation processes where possible. Now, let's assess where we stand today in relation to our goals. We'll begin by discussing the solutions that are currently satisfactory or have been successfully implemented since I started in July two thousand twenty-three. Servers and storage. Back in two thousand twenty-two, City has invested in the new servers and storage, and that investment actually paid off. The servers and storage components are in a good shape, and with the proper maintenance, can be utilized for a few more years. Computers, about fifty-five percent of computers used by employees are in adequate shape. Since I assumed this role in July two thousand twenty-three, I have addressed several critical issues. One major concern was outdated and high-security risk associated with email and SharePoint platform. To address this promptly, I migrated the platform to Microsoft Office three sixty-five cloud within a few months. This upgrade not only reduced the security risk, but also added extra tools for each user. The tools you see on this slide have been designed by Microsoft to help users make their work more efficient, and I'm glad to report that all these tools are available to each email-enabled employee at the city today. Antivirus. To improve the security, I deployed new antivirus software from a leading security provider. This software allows to react quicker on the attack, isolate infected computers from the network for investigation, and can help mitigating the risk of ransomware attack. I also deployed new email filtering system. This slide shows that about forty-nine percent of all emails received are being filtered out as spam or other versions of attack attempts. The new email filtering system is helping City to mitigate the risk of email phishing attacks and keep the public data safe. In the last quarter of two thousand twenty-three, IT Division collaborated with City Clerk Office to migrate the document archival system to the cloud. This upgrade is directly benefiting internal and public users. The new system is more reliable, the search is quicker, and system is more available to residents to perform the search on city's public records. Additionally, it provides automation capabilities which we did not have before. IT Division also worked with Economic Development Department and their consultant on Bellflower Connect project. Bellflower Connect will be a citywide Wi-Fi network virtually available to everyone. So far, I've discussed components that are either in a good condition or have been recently improved. However, there are areas where City IT infrastructure needs significant upgrades. I will start with the components that need to be replaced entirely. Phone system. Our current phone system is reaching its end of life. Additionally, user feedback has highlighted recurring issues. It's imperative that we replace the phone system by the end of two thousand twenty-four. Computers. About forty-five percent of our computers are over nine years old, causing inefficiencies and downtime. We are already underway with a computer refresh project to address this issue. Updated application. Certain applications for our financial system, building permit, work order management are severely outdated and no longer compatible with modern tools. Their lack of integration creates manual work and inefficiencies. It's time to replace these applications. Network firewalls. Our current firewall model has reached its end of life and will lose support by two thousand twenty-six. We need to replace this firewall before the deadline to maintain network security. I will now address the components that requiring upgrades. Network performance. The demand on our network has already increased and will continue to do so as City increasingly relies on cloud applications for essential tasks. Network speed and availability are crucial for smooth operation. Therefore, we must enhance internet speeds and availability across all city facilities. Meeting rooms. It has become evident that city meeting rooms lack essential equipment such as displays, speakers, projectors, and cameras. Some rooms still utilize outdated components that require upgrading to meet the current standards. City Council chambers. The equipment in the City Council chambers was installed many years ago and would benefit from a refresh to ensure optimal performance. Finally, I will address the components that need to be added. Disaster recovery solution. It's imperative to design and deploy disaster recovery solution to ensure that city services and communications remain operational in the event of major disaster. Battery backup solution. Given past experience with the power outages, especially during summer heat waves, it's crucial to install the battery backup solution to safeguard sensitive and expensive data center equipment and ensure uninterrupted operation. Penetration testing. Penetration testing involves simulating cyber attack to identify weaknesses in our systems, network, or applications. By partnering with vendors to conduct periodic penetration testing, we can proactively address the security flaws. Deploying additional security tools such as email phishing campaigns, password manager, and intrusion detection and prevention system will improve overall security posture and help with achieving our goals. Finally, employee training programs. Having the tools is important, but knowing how to use them is the key. Fortunately, employee feedback has indicated willingness to participate in training programs, which will enhance employee skills and ultimately benefit the public. We should make these training programs available to employees. Allow me to present the final slide of the presentation, the timeline. This timeline illustrates the completed projects, highlighted in green, and outlines the schedule for future projects discussed in this presentation along with their approximate start date. I'm currently collaborating with Finance Department regarding the budget, and the City Council may expect amendments for upcoming projects. With this, I conclude my presentation and welcome any questions or comments. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Very complete presentation. I can't remember ever having one about this subject matter, so it really is well-received. And the question I was gonna ask is, can you get to us not only the timeline, but the, how much money we need to put aside to be able to provide what you're looking for? And it sounds like you already have met with Finance Department to figure that one out.
Yes, we started working on that, but we don't have a complete number yet. We are still working on multiple things.
Right, but it's a basic need that we need for our city. So keep on it, and we'll amend the budget accordingly so that we can be up to speed on all this stuff. Mr. Santiness, have you any questions on the presentation?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Sergio, for a very impressive presentation. I think in fairness to the audience, can you give us a brief background of your experience? Because I know you have worked here before, and then you came back. I think they need to know your expertise, if you can say something about your background.
Yes. I worked at City of Bellflower as a consultant from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen. I was part of GST company, and City of Bellflower had a contract with them. And then I left to the private sector. I worked for SMS Data Center. This is a data center located in Irvine, California. And I spent, what, four years from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. And then City invited me to come back and be a part of the city and work on the issues and make improvements.
Okay, welcome home.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions here. You talked about cyber threats and penetration testing.
Yes.
I would advise you, recommend to you to get in touch with JPIA because they have a consultant that does exactly penetration testing.
Right.
As you know, JPI covers a lot of cybersecurity insurance, and they're gonna be a good partner, so reach out to them.
Great, thank you. I will do that.
And I was kind of shocked about the end of life for our phone system. Twenty twenty-five, that's next year. So we need to do something drastic about it, right?
Well, we need to replace it. It doesn't mean that it's gonna stop one day, but it could. And being out of support is not a good idea.
Right, exactly. Because I'm thinking about the worst-case scenario, it's end of life, and then the system fails. We have no phone system, right? That's the worst-case scenario.
And Councilmember, if I may, when Sergio came on in July, the phone system wasn't the only thing that was on end of life. All the things that he replaced were at end of life. So he identified those, there wasn't a plan. He has a plan now, and so I have no doubt that he's able to meet these needs, and a lot of these end-of-life things have been very critical to us. And now that he's here, we're able to address them.
I would kind of put emphasis on that because I cannot just imagine City Hall without a phone system.
Correct.
So unimaginable. Okay, so thank you for that. And then, what's the usual life expectancy, effective life expectancy of, let's say, computers these days?
Typically, it's from three to five years.
Okay.
So we are, for some of them, we are much over the.
We said nine years, so we're doubling that, okay. I know that in the budget, we have a line, if I recall correctly, it's called Equipment Replacement?
Yes, the computers will not need to be a new line item, so those are approved. That is one thing that was current. There is a refresher program already in the budget for the computer systems themselves.
Okay, good, good. So we can tap into that, all right? Very good. And I'm with the mayor, I think we need to invest here. And we're gonna be talking about the budget next year, but there are some cases wherein we need to take action sooner than next year's budget. So I'm open to the idea of upgrading now, especially if the system will be down, if it's gonna be very inefficient. I mean, that's really bad.
Correct.
Okay? So with that, again, thank you so much, very impressive report.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Sergio, my apologies for having to exit during your presentation. I apologize, I'll make sure to watch it later tonight.
No problem, I can repeat.
I'll watch it at home. But I do want to take the time to just compliment you and your efforts. The change is tremendous. Your responsiveness and the way you handle the matters as they come forth, and I can see that from experience, I just want to commend you on that. Thank you, and like I said, I'll watch this a little bit later. And from that, I'll just leave it at that for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Morse, have you any questions?
I was just curious, when you replace a phone system, or how does that work in between? Does the City Hall's phones go down at some point? Is there like, or is it a seamless?
For the most part, it will be a seamless process. We will prepare everything beforehand, and then we will set a date when we port the numbers. There will be a minimal downtime. Typically, it's done during the night when there are no calls or during the weekend. So we don't expect any major downtime, but as we progress, we will let everybody know what to expect.
That was my only question.
All right, Mr. Dutton, have any questions?
Yeah, one is on the phone system. Just the phone system at city hall or the phone system is included in everything, the public works, the parks and departments?
All the sites.
All sites at once, how old is this phone system?
I think, I believe it was installed in 2016 or seventeen.
Okay, and that's when we got the new handset, so so that was when, because I knew that we did, we phones, we got the new there was new, the equipment on the desk.
Correct.
The handsets, wow, I didn't think it was that old. So that was like sixteen or seventeen, so. Yeah. And they're already aging out. Great presentation, Sergio. I'm amazed at how much I understood that, being as many computers as I own. And I thought I would never own any computers, but with my business of several and I my ID comes in, you know, twice a month and spends a day there every, you know, two days a month and goes through. So I know exactly what you're talking about there, but I do have a question. What does a disaster recovery solution look like? And that's, I imagine that's from catastrophic catastrophic failure.
You are correct, disaster recovery can be done in multiple ways. Typically, it goes from the from the time of recovery, based on the time of recovery. The longest time is cheaper, the the shortest time of recovery is more expensive. We will find the balance between the cost and what we need for the city and then we will design it. Typically, every solution for disaster recovery is custom designed for the organization and their needs. So this is what we are going to do.
And so you're you're talking about, say, it was an earthquake and we lost half of a building.
Correct.
And to get things going on and get the internet back up, do we buy equipment and kind of keep it in a in off-site somewhere to put it together on a drop of a hat?
Correct, this is part of part of the project to to look into all these things and understand what city can afford to lose and how much time we we need to recover.
That answers my question, I understand it's basically some hardware to try to put something together because if we go down, you're not going to buy stuff real quick.
It's a combination of hardware and software somewhere, yes.
Great, I think you got all the bases covered, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all your questions?
Yep.
I just want to thank you for the great job you've done on trying to get us up to speed on this. And on a personal note, when I couldn't receive my emails anymore and you came to my office and announced that my computer may need replacement since it was a Windows seven. And when you say things like the question, how long does a computer last, three to five years? It takes me that long to get the package opened. So I really appreciate you allowing me to spend eighteen hundred dollars of my own money to get a computer. That's good for three to five years, right? But and and of course, when we initiated this, whenever we get a new project going, our Parks and Rec Director PJ says, PJ, you could just run with this. And so I want to thank you for being able to help work through the process of having Sergio come back because your efforts are obviously paying off. But I know when you sit up there and monitor everything that's going on and we don't quite know who to bless this opportunity on, it's like, oh, PJ, I'll handle it, and you've done great with this.
It's it's been a very easy job to get a manager like Sergio.
All right, well, you you guys are basking in great sunlight tonight and we're all impressed with what you've accomplished and what you continue to do. And I thank you very much for the presentation. And I'd like to think you can do this every year, every six months, whenever you think's necessary to let us know how you're proceeding with the project and what monies you need to complete it.
Sounds like a plan, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next we're going to have presentation by the Metropolitan Water District, Southern California Pure Water Program and Conveyance System Project Overview. And do I got it right here, John Bednarski, are you going to be the presenter? Okay, so you're going to be plugged in here in a moment and tell us about our water possibilities.
Well, thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for inviting Metropolitan here tonight to talk to you about what we feel is a really exciting and important program for Southern California. My name's John Bednarski, I'm the chief engineer at Metropolitan Water District. In our group, we have about four hundred professional and technical people that do all the engineering, planning, design and construction management for Metropolitan's infrastructure. Before I get into the presentation, just by way of background on Metropolitan, we were formed in nineteen twenty-eight by an act of the state legislature and our number one mission at that time was to design and build and operate the Colorado River Aqueduct, about two hundred and fifty miles of aqueduct and five pumping plants to bring water from the Colorado River to the then, you know, quickly growing Southern California region. In the the aqueduct was put online in the early nineteen forties and we began delivering water to our member agencies at that point in time. In the nineteen sixties, we contracted with the state of California to become the largest state water contractor and to bring water, to import water down from Northern California in the series of reservoirs and aqueducts that the state developed to move water in 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 and around the state of California. But now, as as climate changes upon us, those two traditional sources of supply are no longer providing the resiliency and consistency that we need. And so our board of directors is now considering develop a very large, what we call a regional recycled water program, or pure water Southern California. Metropolitan now today consists of over five thousand square miles of area, ranging from Ventura down to San Diego and from the Pacific coast into Riverside area. We provide wholesale water supplies, so we're not a water retailer, we're a water wholesaler, provide water to about nineteen million people in Southern California in support of one trillion dollar economy in Southern California. So I just wanted to give you that background as we start talking about this program because I think it really puts the program sort of in context with what sort of our scope of responsibility is. So the Pure Water Southern California program will consist of taking used wastewater that is presently collected by the Los Angeles County Sanitation Districts. That water flows to one of their eleven water treatment plants and the one that we are focused on with this program is called the AK Warren Resource Facility, which is located down in Carson. Some of you may have been fortunate enough to have tours of that facility. It treats water now about two hundred and fifty million gallons per day, treats that water to what they call secondary effluent and then discharges that water to the ocean. So twenty-four seven, all of this treated wastewater is going out to the to the Pacific Ocean. So our goal with our main partner, the sanitation districts, is to repurpose and improve on that wastewater treatment process and make that water available for beneficial reuse within the Los Angeles, Southern California area. So they will be cleaning the water, will be utilizing advanced purification process that will further purify that water to the point that that water is suitable for what we call either indirect potable reuse, recharging the groundwater basins and potentially for direct potable reuse by blending that water with our existing water supplies from the Colorado River and the state water project at our two water treatment plants in Laverne and one in Yorba Linda, California. And by doing this, we really feel that we we're making important steps of providing a resilient water supply for our service area. It's a big program, it's one of the largest of its kind in the world. A project that you may be familiar with is presently being operated by the Orange County Water District. They have a project that is about a hundred and thirty million gallons per day. Our project, not just to get the bragging rights in Southern California, but because of the capacity of the plant down in Carson, will be about a hundred and fifty million gallons per day. Right now, our cost estimates for that full build out are about over eight billion dollars that will be funded by Metropolitan and the partners in this program. But it will be enough to supply one and a half million people within our service area. So very significant contribution to the local water supply reliability of Southern California. To pull off a program like this, it takes a lot of partners and you can see the two main partners at the top of the screen, Metropolitan Water District and the Los Angeles County Sanitation Districts. But then, once you produce the water, you have to have people to sell that water to. And so we're going to be relying on what we call Metropolitan's member agencies. These are the the agencies that are able to buy water at a wholesale basis directly from Metropolitan. And then many of these member agencies of ours will then retail that water out to say Golden State Water or some of the private water companies. So here in Bellflower, you might be receiving your water indirectly through the central basin, MWD. We also work closely with the groundwater basin managers. We have some partners down at the bottom of the screen, I'm going to talk about those in a couple of minutes, both Southern California Edison and LA County Public Works. And then you also see what we call Colorado River Partners. And you might wonder, well, why are partners on the Colorado River interested in this? Well, they're interested in possibly funding this program because under a deal that we would work out with them, we would potentially leave water on the Colorado River for them, for both Nevada and Arizona to use. So they'd be very interested right now in being equity partners in this program. So here's the overview of the program. So we start with the treatment facilities down in Carson and then through about forty miles of pipeline, starting out going eastward through the city of Carson, Long Beach, Lakewood. We then turn northward and go through the city of Bellflower and then all the way up to the San Gabriel, the Santa Fe Spreading Grounds. And then we have a pump station at that location that would send some of this water over to what we call the Waymoth Plant and then down through some existing infrastructure we have to the Deemer Plant. And it's at those two plants that we would be utilizing this water in what we call the direct potable reuse application. Along the blue pipeline there, there's many opportunities for groundwater replenishment and you can see some of those areas circled with the dash circles. So those would be either spreading locations or injection wells along the way. And now what I, what I'm going to do with this presentation now is then focus in on the the pipeline reach for the city of Bellflower because you're an important partner with us. We've had similar conversations like the one we're having tonight with your council, with the city of Carson, with the city of Long Beach and planning to do that with the city of Lakewood also. So as we develop a major infrastructure program like this, it's really important to develop those strong stakeholders and partners. And we we recognize that we're going to be coming into your community and for a while, it's going to be a disruption to your residences and potentially some of your businesses. We feel that we're fortunate in the city of Bellflower that there's not going to be a lot of impact to businesses and to traffic congestion as we're going to be using some existing rights of way either by Southern California Edison or by the LA County Public Works, and I'll get into that. But we really do want to take a close look at traffic impacts, residential impacts, proximities to school, and by going down this checklist and working closely with your staff, like the Public Works Department, your city manager, really come up with what we feel is the optimal alignment for this pipeline. It's going to be a seven-foot diameter pipeline, so it's quite large, probably larger than any of the the water pipes that are going through the city of Bellflower at this point in time. But it is important infrastructure that that we need to get in place. And then, once it's in place, it's pretty much forget it's there. You know, it's it's going to be welded steel pipe with cement mortar lining. These pipelines have a hundred-year life, so we don't expect that there would be any disruptions to your public by having to go in and do any kind of repairs or things like that once it's initially installed. So here here we are starting talking about the alignment through through Bellflower. There's about three, a little bit over three miles of pipeline that will be constructed within your city. Our plan is to do tunneling under the major intersection. So streets like Alondra, Artesia, certainly the freeways, that will all be tunneled underneath there. We're expecting that construction will last about a year. So we feel that we can get in and out of your community relatively quickly. And again, minimizing the community impacts by utilizing some existing rights of way that both Southern California Edison and LA County Flood Control have in your city. And again, as a way to minimize interferences in your community. So we we start down at the south, coming up on Pala Verde Avenue, and I'll get into some of the the details of that alignment as we go from south to north in just a minute. But I wanted to give you an overview of what this construction is going to look like. So there's two types of construction that we'll be utilizing, what we call open cut construction, where we actually open up the street, drop the pipe in, backfill it and then repave the street. You know, this is relatively straightforward. We make really good progress on this on a day-to-day construction basis. But it is complicated because of all of the utilities that are in the street. And if we're going along the alignment and there's gas lines, there's water lines, there's nowadays telecom lines, you know, we have to find out, we have to find a way to either go under those, support them temporarily as we're constructing and basically just not make a nuisance of ourselves by digging up all of this buried infrastructure. The other way of building these things is with what we call trenchless technologies. And there's a variety of different trenchless technologies, but ones you might be familiar with are tunneling operations. And we plan to be using these at some of those major street intersections in your community so that we don't disrupt the the normal flow of traffic. But in order to create a tunnel crossing, we do have to create a pit on either side of the intersection. And from that pit, we drop in our tunnel boring machine along with the pipe that's going to follow the tunnel boring machine along. So on either side of a major intersection, we'd be expecting that we'd probably have to take out two lanes of a four-lane street, so there'd be a slight restriction for the length of that construction aspect as we're going through. And I'll show you where that, where we specifically have this. But this is an example of one of our pits that we had down in Carson when we were relining one of our our pipelines a number of years ago. And as we're developing these sites, we try to work really closely with your community, with the residences. I have some of my staff is here today, a couple folks from the engineering department, but also our external affairs department is super important to us as we develop these plans because they're going to be really our first point of contact with your community, understanding what your needs are and and how we can work collaboratively with you. So let's start talking about the alignment and I'll move through this quickly because I know there'll probably be some questions. And your Public Works Director asked me to keep this under twelve minutes, so I'm going to do my best to do that. So we'll be coming into your into your city on Pala Verde Avenue about at one one eighty-third street and moving north, and the line shown in blue is going to be an open cut pipeline, large enough to support the seven-foot pipe, kind of along the lines of what I showed in that one photo. And then as we come up to Artesia Boulevard and recognizing that this is a major intersection for your city, we would typically go underground at this point so that we wouldn't tear up the whole intersection and cause a lot of traffic issues. But because there's also north of Artesia Boulevard, Pala Verde turns into a residential street, we're planning to tunnel underneath the street so that we don't have a large open cut pipeline operation in front of many people's homes, blocking their driveways and things like that. We'll continue that continue that tunneling operation as we cross the ninety-one freeway and then end up by the skate park. And we plan on having a tunnel shaft at the skate park. We've been talking with your team, your management team, about what to do with the skate park. It'll have to be taken down for a short amount of time while we're doing construction there. We're fully willing to to rebuild that to your specifications as it comes time to do that. At that point, we will then begin open cut construction again, this time moving along the right-of-way through Carruthers Park and through the LA County Flood Control District. So we would like to identify one side of that right-of-way alongside the San Gabriel River, just outside of the embankment, and then continue on with our open cut pipeline installation, moving north. And then as we get to Alondra Boulevard, again, another major street crossing, we'll go underground for that and move diagonally into the Southern California Edison right-of-way and then pop up on the other side of of Alondra Boulevard. Moving forward, we're now in the River View Park. And, you know, we, again, we want to work very closely with you on what your expectations are, both during construction and after construction as far as mitigation and remediation of this park. We understand it's an important resource for your community. Again, we want to be in and out as quickly as we can. Open cut construction is going to allow us to do, move very, very quickly as we're going up along River View Park, moving towards Rosecrans. And again, another major intersection, that green line, you can see we're going to go underground as we cross Rosecrans and then come out on the other side and move through that trailer storage area, open cut pipe, so we're going to have to work closely with this business to get them to move all of that stored material and equipment out of the way. Then finally, we end up at Foster Road, but we've crossed through the Byron Zen Park and then move out to the edge of your of your city limits. Again, open cut construction through that that portion of the alignment. So I wanted to wrap up by just giving you some idea of where we are in this planning process. Twenty thirty-five at the far right seems like it's a long way away, but it's really just a little bit over ten years. And for an eight-billion-dollar program, that's a lot of work to pack into basically eleven years. So we're completing the environmental planning process right now. We're going to have a public draft of the programmatic document out on the street at the end of the year. We're hopeful that your staff will contribute to the comments that come in at that time. And it's our goal to have a final environmental document in front of our board for their certification about the third quarter of twenty twenty-five. And then at that point in time, once the environmental planning process is completed, we can actually start construction. We're already beginning design of some aspects of the pipeline now. In fact, my my team is is, you know, kind of chomping at the bit to start the preliminary design on the portion that goes through Bellflower. But then it's going to take us some time to get to the other reaches. We think we can begin making deliveries like to the city of Los Angeles, down in the in the South Bay area, city of Long Beach by twenty thirty, and then phase one will be fully started up around twenty thirty-three to twenty thirty-five. So what are our next steps? We would like to get city approval of our conceptual alignment. That's why we're here today to talk to you about the alignment. We feel that we've been working very closely with your city staff. We feel that we've been working very closely with your city staff. We're trying to address their comments and concerns as we go. We have a fair amount of flexibility because we're early in the process now, but as you can see from our alignment, we decided to move into undeveloped, relatively undeveloped areas instead of going down city streets with our alignment for the pipeline. We would like to get that concurrence on the alignment so that we can begin some of the conceptual designs and also field investigations like geotechnical investigations, things like that. And then of course, along the way, we'll be collaborating and coordinating closely with your city staff as we move forward and again, we'd be available to give your council an update at any time that you feel it would be appropriate. So with that, I'm going to wrap up and hopefully I didn't take too much time and see if there's any questions I can answer.
Thank you very much. That was very concise and to the point and appreciate that very much and we'll see if any of my council colleagues have questions for you. Let's start on this end over here. Wendy, have you any questions for this project?
No, you may have said it, but how deep do you guys dig?
We typically go down about three pipe diameters, so for a seven-foot pipe, we'd be somewhere in the range of 20 to 25 feet deep.
I don't have any other questions at the moment.
Mr. Dutton?
Yes, so is there going to be, this line is for drinking water or recharging water?
A combination of the two. It's going to be highly purified water from the facility in Carson, directly coming out of the pipe, it'll be suitable for groundwater replenishment and then with blending at our treatment plants, we'll be able to blend it with our treated water and then distribute it that way in what we call direct potable reuse.
For the audience and cable, the TV network, people that watch us, I don't think a lot of people know how important the groundwater replenishment is. Can you just do a brief talk of what, why we do that?
Well, we're blessed in the Los Angeles area here to have very good groundwater basins. You know, much of the soil has been deposited over the millennia from the San Gabriel Mountains. It's very well suited to carry water and hold water. In fact, in the early days of development down here, there used to be so much groundwater that that's where Artesia got its name. Artesian water supply would just bubble up to the surface. Well, over time, pumping of the local groundwater drew that level down and so now when we don't have enough natural runoff from the San Gabriel Mountains or there isn't enough imported supply to recharge the groundwater basins, we need to do that artificially. And so this is a man-made supply to recharge the groundwater basins. But a number of the communities in and around Bellflower are 100% dependent on groundwater supplies. They have very good groundwater supplies, it's high-quality water and, and they use it regularly and we want to make sure that there's supplies to replenish that.
And you recharge water to also fend off seawater intrusion, is that correct?
That's correct.
That was one thing.
Oh, yes, that's correct.
That's kind of important.
Yeah, near, down near Los Alamitos, they have a seawater intrusion barrier that the county of Los Angeles operates and they take this highly purified water like we'll be producing here and they actually inject it into the ground there to repel the seawater that would otherwise want to come in.
So this system is, is, gets water from the south in Carson area? There's that much water, where's that water come from?
Well, that, that water is collected all through Los Angeles County as far north as like La Cañada and out to Pomona and then that water, the way they've set up their system, it kind of funnels it down along the San Gabriel River and the Los Angeles River and then brings it to that plant in Carson.
So it's groundwater that we're getting, not?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. The water that the county is treating is wastewater.
So it's wastewater, okay, the purple pipe water.
Residential or industrial wastewater.
Okay, so it's wastewater that comes in, it's not the river, the sheds, the water sheds or anything?
That's right.
Okay, so there's that, well, that's a lot of water that is going up the pipe and then it's going to send it up the pipe all the way right now to?
To the Santa Fe Dam area, about, you know, 20 miles north of here.
And along the way, is there valves to, you said that a couple, few cities could get it and?
Yeah, we're going to be working with our member agencies now to develop contracts with them, so we'll know like for the central basin or the west basin or the city of Long Beach, we'll know where they want to have a connection and a valve that they can draw off this water. But you're right, the rest of the water will have to be pumped, so we'll have a series of pump stations along the pipeline alignment. We'll have blow-off valves in case there's a power outage, you know, and, and we can't pump the water and have all those kind of safety precautions on the pipeline.
So it may, as this system gets developed, it's, it may have different connections through the way, but we don't know where they're going to be at this point in time. It's still not even designed yet, it's?
The ones closer to the plant, we, we've already been talking with Long Beach and with some of the other, you know, we know where those ones are going to be, the ones north of here, we're not exactly sure and we're working that out.
Some of the plants from Carson to San Ana or the San Gabriel Dam, is there, there's other like sanitation district or whatever, are they going to be pumping water into that pipe along the way to help or it's all coming from the south?
It's all coming from Carson.
Okay, got it.
And once it comes out of that plant, it's going to be highly purified, almost like distilled water quality.
And then is that water going to be injected or is it just going to be like, you know, put in the riverbed with the sand berms and soaking?
A combination of the two.
Combination of the two, okay, got it.
Combination of the two, injection wells and some spreading.
And then you mentioned blending the water, can you get into that? Because some kinds, some water don't like other water. Am I right?
Well, it's all, it's all good water, it's just a matter of how you want to use it. If you want to put the water into the ground, this water is suitable to go directly into the ground and then be pumped out later on by, by groundwater pumpers. If you instead want to have this water go directly out to customers as part of Metropolitan's basic supply, then that water has to be blended with water either from the Colorado River or from the state water project. And we have two treatment plants, one in Laverne and one in Yorba Linda that we would be sending this water over to. So that application, we call direct potable reuse because it's not going through the groundwater aquifer, it's going straight to one of our treatment plants.
This water, if it's blended, can be drinking water?
Absolutely. There are regulations from the state of California that just came out last year. Yeah, that's right.
Okay, that's new to me.
It'd be blended and retreated, just like all of our water on the aqueduct.
Because we know Mother Earth is the best filter there is for water.
That's right.
And that's all my questions. Thank you, good job.
Thank you, thanks.
Mr. Sanchez, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Yep, yep, thanks.
To piggyback on Councilmember Dutton's question about the water, so my understanding is the wastewater is collected by the sanitation district, right?
That's right.
And then it goes south to the Carson Joint Pollution Control Plant, which is now AK Warren.
Yes.
That's the new name. So it's being treated there and then somewhere being used to, to water golf courses at this time and things like that. So do you know what percentage of that goes into the ocean?
Well, from the AK Warren Facility in Carson, all of the water goes into the ocean. They don't have the advanced treatment at that facility.
Well, I thought that there's water that's being used for, to water golf courses.
So they have, the, the county has other water treatment plants.
The purple pipes, right?
Yes, the purple pipes, no, you're absolutely correct. Nearby here is the Los Coyotes Water Reclamation Plant, it's right off the 605 freeway near the 91. That's one of the county's facilities that produces tertiary treated water, so it's gone through the normal treatment plus it, it gets filtered and then it's suitable for purple pipe. So they have like eight of, seven or eight of these plants all through their distribution system, all the way, like I said, from Pomona, La Cañada, down along their collection system. But there are parts of their system that don't have a reclamation plant like that and those flows go down to Carson and from there, they go out to the ocean.
So with this new technology, every, every drop of water can be used for?
Absolutely, and that's what we're trying to do.
And in your slide, if I recall correctly, I think you mentioned that this will, this will be serving 1.5 million residents?
Right.
That's a big chunk of 19 million.
Yes, it is. It's a significant project for us.
Very significant, okay. So, yeah, so this is quite impressive. And so, so the water goes from being collected by the Los Angeles County Sanitation District, coming from the north, going to the south in Carson, and then you're going to pump it back to the north once it's treated?
Yes.
Wow, quite technology, huh?
Yeah, yeah. So it's a very energy-intensive process. We'd like to use more of the water near the place where it's produced, but there's also a great demand along the San Gabriel River and then up around the Santa Fe Dam area for groundwater replenishment supplies and so that's what we're trying to meet.
Yeah, okay, one more, one more question. How long does it take to, for the water, the treated water to, once it's spread into the spreading ground? How, how long does it take to wait into the water table?
I would say anywhere, it, it, from the time it's put into the basin and spread and then percolates down and then comes back out, it's about six months.
Six months.
To make that whole cycle of going into the groundwater, moving over towards an extraction pump and then being pulled out, it's about six months.
Okay, oh, good. And finally, you mentioned that the budget is about $9 billion for this?
About $8 billion.
$8 billion?
Yeah.
So where's the funding coming, funding coming from?
That's what we're working on now. So we have our partners on the Colorado River, we have the Los Angeles County Sanitation Districts, we have Southern California Edison, LA County Flood Control. Basically, you know, we're looking for them to contribute also because it is a regional benefit to all of Southern California. And then of course, we have our member agencies that will purchase the water from Metropolitan once it's produced.
Okay. And, and then finally, once she, once she installs all these pipes underground, underneath the street or sidewalk, I mean, intersections and River View Park, it will be the way it was before you?
That's our goal is to work with your staff so that we put it back to the way it was originally.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you so much. Again, I'm very impressed, hopefully this, this will happen.
We, we hope so too, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank you for the presentation. I want to say that I had the fortune of taking a educational tour of the Hoover Dam and my, was it impressive, just the, the, the facility itself and everything that, that goes into operating that dam and just getting the water out here. And I think sometimes we, as we live in Southern California, we take for granted how easily we have access to water, right? And so one of the things, you know, just to highlight, if anyone's wondering why Edison's a partner in this is because the Hoover Dam produces electricity?
That's right.
That we, you know, it was a, it was a kind of a, an additional resource that was created right through the process.
Not just water, but power also.
Exactly, not just water, but power also. You know, really, my colleagues had a lot of the great questions. My one question for you is your, what's your timeline goal to actually bring this item back to the council for consideration?
Honorable Mayor and council members, I, I don't know that we're going to bring this back to the council for consideration at another date. What's happened with other cities is they've, they've essentially received the presentation and then just signed off on a letter, either agreeing or disagreeing with the proposed alignment that, that was highlighted today. Now if there's, certainly if there's another path that the council would like to see explored in terms of, you know, trenching and, and doing all this work, you know, whether it be Woodruff or Bellflower Boulevard, not that we want to do Bellflower, but yeah, if there was, if there was another route that the council thought prudent for, for MWD to take a look at, then we would just simply put that in a letter and the letter would be signed by the mayor and, and just saying, you know, whether or not there's concurrence with the route presented tonight or whether or not there's an alternative they, they would like to look at.
Okay, very good.
It can be done administratively.
It can be done, okay, great, that was my next question. Well then, what I really do appreciate and I guess I would ask for further clarity is, I appreciate first of all, the comment about restoring our park facilities to our liking and taking a bit of an opportunity to, you know, redefine the area and, you know, improve on that, right? So that's something Director Len that we would do at a later date and that would be separate items that would come to the council.
Correct, so when, when they get to the point where they're releasing their environmental impact report, the, the city of Bellflower will have ample opportunity to comment on, on, on the report itself, which would include restoration and mitigation and how we want to see it put back.
Right.
Perfect, great. I, I thought it was important that we asked those questions just because, you know, I want to make sure that the, our citizens know that while today's discussion might be light, there's still further discussion as to how we restore and how we mitigate these future concerns. I mean, you did a really phenomenal job of, of talking through the process, but at the end of the day, it won't happen tomorrow and, and they'll forget about it, but at the end of the day, we will be having a further discussion as to how we mitigate.
Right, and I think that will be an activity for our collective teams and, you know, we would just expect that your staff is up, keeping you updated, but we'll be dialoguing a lot over the upcoming couple of years as we start putting some, some meat on the bones of what the alignment looks like there.
Perfect. And then just the last comment, just want to thank you and the Met Board and everyone for the consideration, coming in and proposing these undergrounds and, you know, just being proactive in that area. I mean, that's really, you know, just, you don't get that often in our, in our line of work, so.
Appreciate it.
I want to say thank you for that. And then that concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Staff, could you put back up on the board the presentation of where the pipeline's going to be placed in our city?
Try and do that here. You want?
Yeah, that works, the one, Carruthers Park area.
One more forward, oops, the other way.
Okay. All right, so if we know that we have Carruthers Park, the blue line indicating where you propose to put your new water, Len, could you show us where that jet fuel line is in relation to that new line?
It's, they're aware of it. I told you about it our first meeting.
Well, I, I just think we should flush that out, if you pardon the pun, you know.
They going under it or over it?
Well, I'd like, like to know.
Yeah, they, one of our first meetings, we, we brought that to their attention and I believe there've, there's already been some communications with, with the company. It's, it's kind of obscured, if you go back one more, one more slide.
The other way.
Yeah, the other way, excuse me.
Sorry.
Yeah, so where, where you see the, the, the green line intersecting the 91 freeway, right where it's coming up on, you know, that general area, that's?
That's Palo Verde there, wasn't it?
Excuse me?
That's Palo Verde, that green section.
Yeah, Palo Verde and then it dead-ends right before the freeway, then when you come up on the other side is where the petroleum company had their, had their issue a year and a half ago.
So, so constructing through these types of areas, it's going to be something that we're going to have to become really good at because as you move up through Carson into Long Beach, there's a lot of areas there with the oil refineries and things like that that we're finding in some of our initial geotechnical investigations that we need to avoid. Once that material comes out, we, we can't put, probably put it back in, we've got to put, you know, clean material in. If there was a spill, I'm not sure what the exact event was there, but you know, there are quite a few areas in this fully built-out portion of Southern California where there have been things that have happened in the past and we're going to have to be aware of those and be able to deal with them in a responsible manner, so that's what we would aim to do here.
So there could be some separation between that jet fuel line and what you're proposing?
I, I would suspect so. I mean, we have a group at Metropolitan called our Water Quality Group and they really keep an eye out for what the engineers and, and my team do and they, and separation of unsuitable pipelines from, from our water pipelines is one of their number one goals, so we'll be working closely with them.
The, what'd you say the diameter of this pipe is?
Seven-foot diameter.
All right, so it's big enough to drive a car through?
Yeah, maybe a Cooper or something like that.
Right, but, so in regard to how many other lines you install, is this regarded to be a larger one, a medium one or a small one?
This is one of our, our, I would say medium. We have some pipes that are like 12 to 16 feet in diameter in the northern part of our system. As we start funneling down to this portion of our system, the, the pipes get smaller, but we do have some other pipes that go through this area that are about the same size.
If I remember right, the water that comes from the Colorado River this way is gravity-fed, correct?
Once, once it leaves the last pump station out near Indio, then it's, then it's all gravity from there into Southern California.
So how is this water going to be fed? Because it looks to me like you're going uphill with it.
We are going uphill. We're going from basically 25 feet above sea level all the way up to, I think it's close to 500 feet.
You must have some massive pumps to be able to accomplish that.
Yeah, but we'll have a, we'll have a series of pump stations. We're not going to do it with just one big lift, we'll have, you know, two or three of them along the way so they can be smaller.
Well, there'd be any pump stations in the Bellflower area?
I'm not aware that they are, the next ones are going to be up in the Whittier area.
Okay. Is it a high-pressure pipe in sense that if someone were to? Is it a high-pressure pipe in the sense that if someone were to poke a hole in it, it'd kill them? Or what kind of a flow do you have in a pipe like this?
I would say that the pressure is going to be relatively large as you leave the pump station. I don't have all the design criteria, but then as you get to the next pump station, the pressure will be lower because the energy has dropped out and that's why you have to boost it again. So, you know, we mark our utilities, we rely on dig alerts and all those kind of things to alert us when there's construction in the area. But from time to time, somebody does, you know, drill into, you know, especially the telecom industry, they're all over the place, you see them all the time. If they don't call us and we don't mark it, then there's a chance for something like that to happen. But it would not be a catastrophic failure, it would be a leak because the steel pipe does not explode. You know, it would be simply the penetration through the pipe and how much water could come out through that penetration.
That was my next question, it's not a concrete pipe, it's a steel pipe?
It's a steel pipe, but it has cement mortar lining on the inside so that it won't corrode with the water in it.
Does, in terms of numerics, you know, we know that water brought in from the Colorado River has priced well over $1,000 an acre foot. If you pump water locally out of the ground, it's maybe $300, $400. Is there an idea of what you are spending to create a usable quantity of one acre foot of water?
We're refining our estimates, but right now it's about $3,000 per acre foot to develop this resource. So that's what...
That's true, that's double what Colorado River costs, right?
It is, but when it's your last new supply, you know, you really look carefully at it to see if you want to pursue that at that higher price. And so, you know, this is, again, City of Los Angeles is embarking on a similar project with the Hyperion plant. We're all trying to be as water resilient as possible, not that the sky's the limit on the cost, by no means. I mean, we're trying to do this as economically as possible.
Doesn't that approach desalinization cost?
It's, we think it's still lower, we think desalination would be over $4,000.
You're getting in the category there.
No, but you're asking very good questions, I mean, it's expensive water.
And those are today's figures, whether they're going to be 10 years or 20 years from now, you know?
That's true.
Well, unless, does my council colleagues have any other questions that might have developed from this discussion?
Yeah, the cost estimate was eight billion?
Yeah, for 150 million gallons. That's in today's dollars.
Or that's in today's dollars, not 20 years from now when this thing's really get going.
Well, just to give you a comparison, on the first phase of the project, which is 100 million gallons per day, so then in the second phase, we'd add another 50, that 100 million gallons is about $6 billion. But when you escalate those costs to the middle of construction, so, you know, it takes time to get into construction, all that, it's already escalated to about $8 billion.
Gotcha.
So that's just time, I mean, the question's very valid, yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, you know, we were always taught, when we went on the, way back, Mr. Thornton Ibbotson, who is always an important part of your board up there, take tours of us through the river, and he's always started off by saying, "All civilization is based on where the water is," going back to the start of time. So that's the basis for where we live and what we do. So this, it doesn't get any more important than what you're discussing. And we're always cognizant of that, so no matter what it costs, we can't be here without your resource.
Right.
So.
Well, we appreciate your understanding and I guess just before I leave, I would offer, we have a, what we call a demonstration plant down in Carson. If your council or some of your staff would be interested in going down there and actually seeing the technology that we're proposing, we have a one-half, well, 500,000 gallon per day testing facility there that we're developing the technology with. And we do have tours, you can find them on our website, public tours in person, so be happy to have you down there.
Well, thank you for the invitation and thank you very much for coming with your colleagues to make this presentation, it's been very valuable to us.
Thank you, thanks for this opportunity.
All right, public comments, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
So now's the opportunity to come forward on non-agenda items and we'd invite you to come to the podium and sign your name and announce your name. We'll record the proceedings so we can make the minutes correct. And feel free to come forward if you have any concerns. Thank you again, sir. Thank you. Well, okay, so I guess we're going to move on because no public comments. It's been a long time since we didn't have, when was the last time that happened, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Of a year ago, have you ever had that? No? Yeah, we don't even have to take a motion to close, we're just dumbfounded, aren't we? Yeah.
Yes, man, talking about too much water.
Right, we wore them out. So, 13A consideration item.
Mr. Mayor, item 13A is a request by Councilmember Morse to schedule a de novo hearing for reconsideration of an item that went to the Planning Commission. For the details of that request, I defer to Councilmember Morse, but if you have specific questions as to the process, I have Beth available as well as our city attorney.
So I was just asking if we could reconsider the item. I'd like a little more clarity on the aesthetics and the overall, they're going to change their whole design or their whole, what they're doing? I know it's a car wash, it remains a car wash, but we do a lot of stuff around Bellflower to make it beautiful and I just want to kind of make sure that that's, we're going in the same order here too on that end of town as we are all around town.
All right, so, staff, are we going to reconsider this another date or what are we going to do?
So the process here looks like this, Councilmember Morse has made the request for the city council to consider scheduling a hearing de novo to reconsider this item. So you're not actually considering the item this evening, all you're doing is answering the question whether you'd like to reconsider that item. And if so, we would schedule that for probably your next council meeting, for you to actually reconsider that item. So tonight, the request is simply to schedule that meeting or not.
All right, so how do you want, do you want to poll the council or you want the city clerk to do this or how do you want to go?
I think we will need a vote of the city council and...
Maybe, I see Beth is here, is she, was she prepared to give a little synopsis or?
We can, we can give you some background if you'd like to, otherwise, I mean, the question before you this evening is not the specific project itself. This is simply scheduling the hearing, but if you want some background on the project, I'm sure Beth can fill you in on the specifics.
All right, if you'd like to give us a little overview of car washes in the city, we're not going to talk about this specifically, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This project went forward to the Planning Commission on April 1st. It was a CUP to convert an existing full-service car wash to a self-service car wash. As part of that process, there were several conditions of approval that were added to the project. There were specific conditions related to the aesthetics. When it came to a vote at the Planning Commission, there were modified conditions that occurred. And ultimately, the Planning Commission did decide unanimously to approve the project with modified conditions. One of those modified conditions were related to the aesthetics itself and to essentially keep the existing architecture the way it is and not to enclose the building. So that was, you know, the main condition that was modified as it relates to aesthetics.
Okay, thank you. Are there, we have citizens present that are, we're going to be a part of the discussion this evening? Is anybody here representing the car wash? Okay, so you understand what we're doing here? Apparently, we have a council member that wants to look into this a little deeper and we're considering moving this date not too far out. Will do a date certain or how would we want to?
I would expect that if you wanted to schedule this, we could schedule it for your next council meeting.
Okay. So do we need a motion in a second in order to do a?
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, just, I just want to do some kind of clarification. So with scheduling a de novo hearing, basically, there's going to be a presentation from staff, right, that's going to process and then rebuttal from the applicant, and we're going to be asking questions. And then the bottom line, correct when we're wrong, my question is, my question is, at the end of the hearing, the city council can either will reconsider the decision of the Planning Commission and basically either agree with it or disagree with the Planning Commission's decision. Is that going to be the process?
That is the general process. Effectively, the city council, by scheduling a de novo hearing, is scheduling a whole new hearing to review this item. So it's not necessarily an appeal, it's a specific new hearing to rehear this item. But effectively, that is what would be in front of you, is you could either approve the project with those conditions, modify those conditions, or disapprove it.
Okay. All right. So at least people now understand what we're going through here. All right, thank you.
It's not a public hearing, so that means there hasn't been notification of the neighbors or anything.
Tonight's decision is not necessarily a public hearing, but the hearing that you would have de novo would be a brand-new public hearing.
All right, and then you're going to do 300, 500 feet, whatever it is, within the project notification?
The same public hearing notification process that we would usually do, yes.
All right, so back to my original question, do you want to motion in a second if we're going to go forward with a de novo?
That would be fantastic, yes.
So, do we have any support for the idea that's been presented?
I'll go make a motion then.
All right.
I'll second it.
Is it, consider the Councilmember Morse's request to consider a Planning Commission approval of additional use permit case CU 23-03.
All right, so we have it first by Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, seconded by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council.
And my notion is also probably, you know, give staff direction to schedule the de novo public, well, that's what this is.
We're going to schedule this for the next scheduled meeting of the city council.
Your municipal code would require that hearing to be scheduled within 10 days and so, not 10 days of tonight, I'm sorry. But staff can schedule that, so.
Okay, so are we not doing a date certain then? Are we going to do a date?
Likely, we could do your May 13th public, we have plenty of time between now and then.
All right, Madam City Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do we have any recusals or conflicts having to do with our consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'm conflicted out on item 14E.
14E, like Edward?
14E, like Edward, yes.
All right, so 14E, Mr. Sanchez?
I'm the only one conflicted out today. That's interesting.
Which one you conflicted on?
14E.
14E, like Edward.
But you guys are not conflicted on anything.
Sunny, you want to check to make sure you're okay? Just want to give you an opportunity. Anybody want to pull anything for discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to pull 14E for discussion.
All right, would you like to have Victor, Mr. Sanchez will be dismissed from the room while we have this discussion? And who wants to make, who do you want to question on this? You asked for it. Probably Mr. Gurecki.
Well, it's going to be Mr. Gurecki, he was public safety here.
Yeah.
I believe Brian's just, yeah, he's right outside.
Oh, Brian's here, okay, there's Brian, yeah.
So you heard on the intercom what we're doing here or you?
Yes, sir. Okay. 14E.
14E, the stop, before we stop.
Yes.
And Mr. Dutton has pulled it, so he's going to have some questions for you.
What triggered us putting a four-way stop at that intersection?
So it's my understanding that coming from Jerry Stock, the traffic engineer, was to be in cohesiveness with the other street further to the north, which I believe is Jefferson, Jefferson and Leahy, where they recently installed a four-way stop to be cohesive with the whole area. His recommendation was to also install a four-way stop at Leahy and Linden.
Did he just drive out there and decided that we might have put one here? Is that how it came up or, because there's a lot of them coming up and it seems to be every intersection all over the city of Bellflower. Is this something that we're doing now, is putting up four-way stops everywhere?
Yeah, Councilmember...
That's where I'm going.
Yeah, Council, I mean, so let's just back up a little bit. When we start, when we did the traffic calming book and this presentations that we did, you know, we started looking at minimal ways to enhance safety, both vehicle, pedestrian and bike safety throughout the city. I'd say in the last couple of years, we've took the opportunity to implement a lot of smaller little changes, one of them being looking at a lot of the stop control or the intersections that lack four-way stop control. And we started putting them through the process of evaluating them for line of sight, comparing the street sizes and just seeing if they fall into the category of being approved for converting from a two-way to a four-way. In addition to that, we've done, we've taken a lot of streets, wider neighborhood streets. We've done centerline striping down the middle of them. We've added striping for curbside parking to better kind of enhance those areas and try to slow vehicles down on the neighboring streets. So the way we've looked at this is sometimes we have residents, we get general requests from a resident, take a look at this and we start putting it through its process for evaluation. Sometimes they come from the Public Safety Department, sometimes they come from my own department in Public Works when Jerry's out and about looking at things. So we have a whole routine that we put them through and if they kind of meet muster, then we take them to the Public Safety Commission and start the process with them at that point.
Has there been any complaints on this section of Leahy for speeding?
No, there was minimal, there was no complaints. I think, leading up to the first commission meeting, I believe we had someone south of Linden that called, I think, called Jerry before the commission meeting and asked and said that he would support it. Then, I believe, at the actual public commission meeting, the property owner on the northeast corner of Linden and Leahy spoke up in opposition of, and, you know, so there's been no big outcry for it one way or the other. We just look at it as an opportunity to kind of slow those vehicles down in that direction and make that intersection safer.
So it's more proactive to stop something, foreseeing something if it might, there hasn't been, did we do, imagine we didn't do accidents at that intersection? There's no concern for, you know, more than accidents unusual in any other intersection or?
No, there was little or no collision history in the last couple of years at that intersection. Really, what we get a lot of requests for from the residents are the speed humps. You know, so have we had requests for people to, for the city to install speed humps down Leahy and Linden? Yes, but we simply do not install speed humps here in the city of Bellflower. We're similar to the city of Lakewood and the city of Downey, we do not do it here. So we look at other mitigating efforts.
I do understand that philosophy in the speed humps. But again, you know, we get requests for speed humps citywide. And I think I asked this last, then this driveway came up, the driveway that's virtually on the intersection? We don't know how that got there.
No, I think that, I don't know the history on that driveway, it certainly wouldn't meet code today.
Yeah, exactly.
We had, we did have to rebuild the, not rebuild, we installed a handicap curb ramp there several years back. Again, just following our ADA transition plan that we're required to implement throughout the city. So we did those, I think those were done probably right before I came on board here, so early 2010s or something along that line.
So I guess the, the reason we're putting there is, is consistency of what--
There, there's, there is a, a lack of line of sight at that intersection. So the way, the way parking, on-street parking has evolved the last five years or so, people are parking right up to those corner edges. So if you're on Leahy Street, either traveling north or southbound, and you're coming to Linden, you, you don't have a stop currently. So, most people around here drive, it's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, so they're probably doing thirty-five down that street. They cannot see any cross-traffic whatsoever until they are in the middle of the intersection. So if someone's on Linden and running the stop sign, or if there's someone on a bike or pedestrian walking with their headphones on, which are all common occurrences, the person driving north and south on Leahy, they don't have a stop sign, so they're not slowing down for anything, but their line of sight is, um, severely, uh, um, obstructed at that, at that location because of the on-street parking.
I don't have anything with the, the Public Safety Commission, other than a small synopsis that went, but I did hear something about a, a red curb from a letter of the resident?
I could speak to that.
Okay.
The, so at the commission meeting, uh, the item was, again, undertook by the commission. Uh, it was ultimately approved, the two-way stop, before we stopped, with the modification of installing a red curb on the northeast, uh, property on, uh, Leahy. That was the amendment that the commission made for that one item.
Northwest.
Northwest.
Yeah, so what's the red curb for?
Uh, that was, again, to keep cars off of the corner, which is what the concern was, and to back the cars up again, uh, away from the, basically, where all the cars will be stopping at the four-way stop.
For line of sight?
I think it was for line of sight purposes also, and also ju-- ultimately just to keep the cars back as you had driveway concerns, and people, I know, uh, at the commission meeting, one of the commissioners spoke to when they went out to observe the scene, that there was a car parked like, almost directly on the corner. Uh, so if we were gonna install a four-way stop, this red curb would keep the cars off of that, right there on the corner where the cars would be stopping. So I think to defend you, yes, it would be for line of sight issues.
And then, also in the letter, it says something about a law changing?
Correct, yeah.
So what's that about?
Well--
There's a law--
So you have a simple member, Alex Lee, uh, wrote, developed, and got, got, uh, AB four-one-three passed, which essentially says any marked or unmarked crosswalk, uh, needs to have twenty feet of red curb, um, restricted, um, in the, in the direction which traffic is coming. So, this year, and twenty-twenty-four, the, the law went into effect on January first, so the order this year from the state has been that all agencies are supposed to issue warning citations, there's no fees. However, in twenty-twenty-five, January one, they will start, um, issuing regular tickets that you're gonna get just for parking in a red zone. So, we haven't delved into it too much, we're, we're familiar with this, you know, we don't, because of the, the, the desire, the need for on-street parking here in town, we really haven't made it a habit of trying to do red curb all over the place. We, we try to keep it as minimal as we can, even though sometimes it seems like we're, we're putting a lot down, but we are cognizant of the, of the need for the on-street parking, so we do try to limit it. Right, right now, I don't have any intentions of painting red curb, uh, in the local neighborhood street areas, uh, unless there's just a complete disregard for it and we start having issues. On our arterial streets, um, a little different, you know, bigger, bigger traffic volumes, more cars, more pedestrians, so, any locations that we have on the arterials, we would most likely take a look at, and where feasible, uh, install the red curb. A lot of times, there's a fire hydrant there anyways, so you're killing two birds with one stone.
Hey, you clarify, can you clarify if, um, AB four-one-three requires red curb, or if it just requires no parking?
No, it's, it's actually silent on, on that. It's, it had, it does not state that the curbing has to be marked--
Right.
--which, you know, one person's interpretation of twenty feet versus another person's interpretation will sure cause a lot of problems.
So this winds up in a similar situation that you have with fire hydrants, where the state law requires that you can't park within fifteen feet of a fire hydrant, but it's not necessarily a red curb. Same situation would exist at, at marked or unmarked crosswalks.
So does the twenty feet start on the straight portion of the curb?
Yeah.
You have a radius, and then it goes straight, so that straight area is, is twenty feet from where the radius meets the straight.
Yeah, BCR, back of curb radius.
What's that?
B, B, yeah, BCR, back of curb radius. That's right, right where, right where it goes from its curve portion to the joint line towards starting straight.
I like the way I said it better. Where the curb meets the straight.
Yeah.
Public Works talk. So then, then, so the state laws, what did it used to be? The, cause everybody knows you're not supposed to park, you know--
Uh, I don't believe there was any restriction.
There's no, yeah, there's no law.
Yeah, the only restriction you had was you couldn't be within three feet of a disabled access ramp.
Ah. So as more cars get on the road, then they decided to pull them back a little bit, got it. So that helps the line of sight then, if that actually happens, but no one's gonna know about that law until they start, tickets start coming.
So I, I kinda go back real quick on this, so I, I believe the, the commission's recommendation was, with the idea that, that law is now in place, and I believe the resident on the northwest corner expressed, um, his difficulties he has when pulling out of his driveway because of vehicles that are parked along that, the, the curb face on the northwest side, uh, I believe the commission's recommendation was to just go ahead and install the red curb, the twenty feet of red curb, right now, um, because it falls within the law, and it, it also will, will help that resident, uh, when they're making their maneuvers, uh, out of their, out of their driveway.
In other words, you have somewhat of a unique circumstance in this--
Yeah, it's really unique, if you look at that driveway that's right there, it's, yeah. Is the resident of Leahy here? You wanna come up and add anything?
Thank you, sir.
Sign your name and announce it, please.
Okay, uh, my name's Alfred Perez, and I wanna thank you for, uh, reading my emails. I was concerned that you didn't, uh, read them, um, after hearing that your computer system is kinda inadequate. But anyway, I'm here just to provide any clarification and emphasize the fact that it would create a hardship for me to exit, uh, and enter my driveway when I please, uh, because those cars are just simply gonna accumulate there, um, and it's gonna create, um, just terrible situation for me and my family. Uh, sir, I just wanna reiterate that driveway's been there since I, since I moved in in nineteen ninety-six, not like I created it, that's the way I purchased the house. Um, I've talked to, um, planning, I've talked to, uh, Mr. Preciado about maybe alternatives, maybe, uh, adding, uh, a driveway, uh, apron at the end of my driveway so I could have access through, uh, Linden, but after he told me that I had to pay out of pocket, I'm like, oh, it's not a good idea, never mind. But anyway, I'm just here to emphasize that it is gonna create a hardship for me. Um, I, you know, I've never, there's no accidents, uh, I've been there, I'm retired, I'm like the neighborhood watch guy, uh, Mr. Hockman's probably happy now that he's relieving, that he's retiring, because he won't have to deal with my phone calls, uh, cause I really try my best to, um, you know, maintain and sustain our, our neighborhood. Um, I'm really proud of Bellflower. I've lived in Bellflower, my kids went to Bellflower, I coached Little League, um, I worked as a parole officer in Bellflower, and, um, I do everything possible to protect our neighborhood, and, uh, I really appreciate it if you guys could, uh, look at this, like I said in my email, just look at it closely, because there's no accidents, the flow's not there, it's, it's really unnecessary.
So your concern is when you back out of your driveway, is it for the cars that are southbound stopped at the stop sign?
It would be the cars, well, it's, it's all the cars. I mean, normally now when I back out, I have to, cause there's cars parked, uh, on the other side at one-five-five-six-one, I have to back out and swerve into the intersection. That's how I get out of my driveway.
Yeah, you have, yeah, your tail end is gonna have to, if you wanna go north, your tail end has to go south.
Has to go into the intersection.
Go south, in the intersection, and then you're go-- good. And I look at it that way as, well, they're stopping over here on the other side, so you gotta break to do that.
Exactly.
But if you're gonna back out to go south, the only, the only hiccup, if there's, there's a car setting in the southbound, stops--
And if there's, and they've, and the thing is, when the cars pile up--
Uh-huh.
Cause they're gonna have to pile up, right? Cause there's a stop sign now, it's just gonna take longer for me to leave or enter my driveway. So, I don't know--
Do they pile up at the other stop sign?
Hmm, there's no stop sign right there now. You're talking about--
The other one down the, the block.
Oh, the other ones?
Yeah, you're in the inner neighborhood.
At times, they do, yeah, because--
School, school time.
The schools, yeah, the, the people, the parents--
Is it that bad?
--the kids. Sometimes I see five, five cars, yeah, they're waiting, they're, they're taking their time, you know, waiting for their, for them, they, they yield as they're supposed to. I mean, the people that actually do complete stops. Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. Did, um, when they put the other stop sign at Jefferson and Leahy, I think it was Jefferson or Linden, Leahy?
Yeah.
Um, have you noticed a difference of the movement, of how fast cars are coming from that stop, coming up to your, your intersection?
No, not, not really. Um, the difference in that intersection is that there's three wide streets, and then, um, Leahy, coming northbound, is actually only thirty feet. And, and it continues like that all the way through Alondra.
Yeah, Jefferson's much wider.
Yeah, Jefferson is wider, and that part of Leahy, north of Jefferson, is actually forty feet, or maybe wider. So it's not the same issue, like, that scenario I described in the email, um, it's gonna be a, a real hardship or challenge for four cars to fit, oops, sorry, in those, in this, within those thirty feet.
Well, actually, I sat over there the other day from getting your email, and, I don't know, five, five or ten minutes, I didn't wanna feel creepy, sitting in front of people's houses, but, um, no, no cars had came speeding or any otherwise, I mean, it was relatively calm, there was none, and, um, I definitely saw where the car across the street parked, there was an SUV, a larger SUV, and for you to have backed out, I was watching your driveway going, yeah, if you were to back out, that would definitely be a problem, so I, I totally sympathize with that.
So you could imagine, five cars there, and then I have to wait.
Yeah, I was, I did notice that, but then, like I said, there was no other, nobody coming up or down the street. It was Saturday, though, so, you know, it wasn't a school day or anything, but--
And it, and it tends to get worse on weekends. That area gets really congested, because we get the overflow, like, one of the gentlemen mentioned, there's an overflow of parking from eucalyptus, the apartments, they all park on Leahy.
Mr., uh, I've got a question, uh, Mr. Gurecki. You shared with me, after I talked to you about this situation, that Jerry's, our traffic engineer, actually was out there for about four or five hours, isn't that what you indicated and measured?
Um, yeah, he did, uh, a morning and an afternoon session, just taking vehicle counts, uh, coming, uh, both north and south on, on Leahy. Uh, it was middle of the week, I think, in his, in his biggest interval, I think he saw, it was five, five vehicles, five or six vehicles in ten minutes, so basically, one car every minute and thirty minutes and forty seconds.
So he never observed any stacking like we're concerned for?
No, but at the same time, uh, to, to the, to the residents, um, what he's talking about as well, you know, the weekends, nighttime, school hours, will, will tend to be a little busy, and Jerry, Jerry took his counts, um, I believe at the eight-thirty hour, so, in the middle of the week, so there was, you know, during the time when there's school traffic, but, that's what he saw in that point of time, you know, the weekends and evenings could tend to be busier.
I also, uh, spent some time on your street after I received your email, to see firsthand what the situation was, cause you can look at a piece of paper, and, uh, I probably need the city attorney to help me on this. What I, what's, I've learned over this process is because we're getting a recommendation from our city traffic engineer, who determines where our intersections are safe, where they can be improved upon, if he makes a recommendation that says that we sh-- the city would be better served to make it a four-way stop for safety reasons, and we did not do that, if someone were to get hurt out there, they would have cause to sue the city because we hadn't taken care of the problem. Is that true?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, let me answer that by restating slightly the question.
Okay.
Once the city relies upon, uh, advice from the city engineer with regard to any traffic, uh, signal, traffic, uh, intersection, et cetera, the city then will have design immunity. So, as I always advise the council, anyone with seven hundred bucks can sue the city, but whether or not they win is a separate question. Uh, once you rely upon the professional advice of your, of your city engineer to make a determination that a particular intersection requires a particular type of signal device, whether that be a stop sign or a traffic signal, or whatever it might be, then the city will have maybe a certain design immunity against any claim for damages against the city because of the design of the intersection. So I would not admit that the city would be exposed to liability, the city is exposed to liability every day, but the question becomes whether or not any of that exposure be, uh, eventually results in, in handing out damages to any particular plaintiff.
Does that make sense to all of you, that if we don't approve this, we have the chance of being subjected because we did not take the recommended path to?
I didn't hear that.
What did you hear?
I heard that we can, as a city, we can get sued every day.
I understand that, but we would not have much--
But we have design immunity, if the four-way stop goes under because the city, the traffic engineer recommended it.
We would not have much of a defense.
I, I would never admit that in public.
Yeah.
Uh, what I would say is that the quiver, the arrows that I have in my quiver, in order to defend the city, gives me an additional arrow in my quiver if we have design immunity, and it's a quite powerful argument against any, any claim.
Okay, I just wanted to put that on the table as we consider--
No, I know.
Yeah.
But there hasn't been a complaint? There hasn't been no record of several accidents?
No, I get that.
Uh, it's, may I speak?
Sure.
Um, I, I did some research, and Caltrans has a criteria, and I think it's like, if you get more, if you have more than five accidents within a two-year period, which there hasn't, and then I think there has to be a volume excessive of six thousand vehicles per day, which we don't, and that's their criteria for a four-way stop.
Anything else to offer until I dismiss you?
Um, I just wanna say that, you know, I've been here in Bellflower for a long time, I still believe in Bellflower, USA, so please, uh, when you make your decision, just consider my liberty. Thank you.
I hope you can see how serious we've taken your response.
Yeah, you have, and thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sunny, have you anything to comment here?
Of course.
All right.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been waiting for this opportunity.
Why don't you cut through the fog here?
I know, I've been waiting for this opportunity. I, I just want to piggyback on the city attorney's comment, not only the city engineer made the recommendation, it was also approved by the Public Safety Commission. So I think that's, that adds more in terms of the, the approval process for the city. And, um, having a lot of experience with, uh, lots of claims, um, design immunity is a very, I know, the city attorney will not say this, design immunity is a very strong defense, very strong. So, if we don't have design immunity, then--
Okay.
We're gonna be exposed.
Understand.
Okay.
Wendy, would you like to make a comment?
Um, I made my observation, I--
I made my observation, I, I, I understand his predicament. With the cars across the street, not so much the stop sign, but the red curb, I think, would be extremely helpful. Because the red curb would be across the street from your driveway, correct? Okay, yeah, that's definitely, I could see that could be helpful for him, being able to pull in and out of his driveway. Stop sign wise, I didn't see any cars going through the intersection when I was there, period.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, but pull item fourteen E for a separate vote.
All right. So, uh.
Mr. Mayor, we need to bring back Councilmember Sanchez. Right?
Separate vote first.
And then it's gonna go back out again.
Well, we're gonna do the separate, let's do the separate vote first. And then we'll come back to the balance of the consent calendar.
So make them what you're making.
He's waiting, see if he gets a second.
Well, you guys, anybody can do a second? Would anybody like a second?
So the motion is only on fourteen E at this point?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. So there's a motion to?
I'll make a motion to vote on fourteen E right now.
Oh, I'll second that. I'm not saying how I'm voting on it, but I'll certainly pull that item and we'll vote on it separately. So we have a motion by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, seconded by Dan Coops, the mayor, to pull the item fourteen E for a separate vote, and then we'll set aside the consent calendar balance when Mr. Sanchez reappears. Does that sound right?
What's the motion? I'm not clear.
All we're doing is setting, we very rarely take a motion, one item and set it aside.
Are we just pulling it or voting on it?
We're gonna pull it and we're gonna vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah, the motion is fourteen E only.
All together and say, approve the consent calendar, and then it's done. We're gonna actually do something separate here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the motion is just to pull.
It's a night of new items tonight, you know?
You guys are acting like this is your first day.
We're trying out all our legs here. All right.
To clarify, we don't need a motion if you want to vote on that item independently.
Okay, well, you're just trying to keep it legal.
Well, you already got one, and you gotta.
As long as you have a motion to consider that item.
All right, so without objection, that'll be the order, we're gonna have a vote on fourteen E.
To clarify, Mayor Protem Dutton's motion is to approve staff's recommendation related to fourteen E. Am I correct in that?
No, separate vote.
He, all he's looking for is a separate vote, we'll do a vote after.
The vote will decide if it's approved or not.
So does that change your position? Would you like me to have a roll call vote?
You can do that, my point is, we don't particularly need to have, to have a motion to do that, if you want to do it, we can.
All right.
That was without objection, or would you like a roll call?
Let's do a roll call, then we've been official.
So, I would, I'll tell you what, can I amend my motion? I would like to make a motion to not consider fourteen E.
All right, so that meeting, you don't want to deal with it tonight? You want to pull it, pull it and let it die, or what?
Ax it.
You're gonna ax it?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna support that.
Well, that sure sounds like it.
I want, I want to deal with it tonight.
Well, no, it's not, we're gonna vote on it.
We're gonna vote on it, yes or no, you want to take off the agenda?
Do I have a second?
Your motion, is your motion to reject fourteen E?
Yes.
There you go, reject the recommendation from the, from the Public Safety Commission. That is his motion.
Okay.
Right?
We'll have a question on that. Sorry. Because I want to make sure I understand what I'm doing. If we reject it, are we rejecting the stop sign, the red curb also, or, and the red curb and the stop sign, or is it separate items, it's everything?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to help the city clerk, may I suggest this motion? To take no action with regard to the Public Safety Commission recommendation and leave the intersection as is. That's my understanding of the desire of the motion maker. And if that's acceptable to the second, then that should be the motion. The Public Safety Commission has, has recommended putting in the stop signs, the motion maker doesn't want to put in new stop signs, and so the motion would be not to accept the Public Safety Commission's recommendation and to leave the intersection as is.
So, for clarity, so the motion is to reject the recommendation of the Public Safety Commission?
Correct.
Okay.
And if that's the, that's the intent of the motion maker and the second, so I understand.
Is there support for Mr. Dutton's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we got a motion by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, and a support by councilmembers Wendy Morris, Sanchez. I'll marry you to Victor tonight, you know, so.
We're all big family.
Well, you speak Spanish, so it's okay. See, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Morris, excuse me.
Aye.
Councilmember Santenaz?
No.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Yes.
Mayor Coops?
No. So we're all locked up at two-two.
So, would the mayor like to explain what just happened to the?
No, because you set it on fire, why don't you do it?
Ties don't go to the rudder, ties will lose. So it didn't pass, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, not to confuse things any further, but is there any subsequent motion to make, to approve the staff's recommendation on the matter?
Ooh.
For, for clarity.
Hey, Bob.
The motion was not to accept the Public Safety Commission's recommendation and to leave the intersection as is. That was a, that was a tie vote, which means that motion did not succeed. But the recommendation remains to adopt the Public Safety Commission's recommendation and to install the new traffic sign.
We know how that's gonna work.
So, the only question is, is unless there's a motion to do so, the tie vote will mean that there is no action taken by the city council with advice and recommendation, and we will move on to the next agenda item.
So which means that Public Safety Commission's recommendations goes through?
Does not go through.
Doesn't go through.
The vehicle code requires an, an actual action made by the legislative body in order for those stop signs to go in. And the Public Safety Commission does not have any legal authority to make any changes, only the city council has that authority. So, absent the city council taking such recommendation and actually implementing it, then the two-two vote will stand and no action will be taken.
All right, so the sign and the red light, red curves will not proceed at this point?
Unless there's a subsequent motion, that's correct.
So I'll make this, just for the record, I'll make that motion.
What if that one's two-two?
Then it will be, no action, no action will be taken, and we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Wow.
Okay, so just for the record, I will, I will make that, I will make that motion to accept the Public Safety Commission on item fourteen E.
All right, and I'll support that motion. So we got a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santenaz, supported by Mayor Dan Coops. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Morris?
No.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
No.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. So we got a two-two the other way.
Okay.
All right. So just so the audience is clear, the Public Safety Commission's recommendation will not be taken up, there will be no change to the intersection, and we'll move on, bring Mr. Sanchez back into the room for, for the vote on the subsequent parts of the consent calendar.
All right. So we completed that, we're moving on to the consent calendar. Thank you, sir, for showing up. Let the record show that Victor Sanchez has rejoined the council, and now we're going to look to, for an approval on the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
Move the consent calendar?
Second.
All right, the motion made by Councilmember Sunny Santenaz, supported by Mayor Protem Ray Dunton, please, please poll the council.
Councilmember Morris? Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. All right, so we're gonna get down to council comments now, and let's start with Sunny. Mr. Santenaz?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just a quick comment. The mayor and I attended the concert hosted by the Bellflower Symphony Orchestra. And this, it was last, last Saturday, it was quite impressive. The focus was on the young professionals. Apparently, there were about sixty-five contestants, they selected eight winners, and out of the eight, five performed, and they were just tremendous talent. Four played the violin and one played the piano. I wish more residents come to this event, this is free event, I think the next one is a concert at Carranza Park. But if you want to see one concert in a year, please come to this concert, which is the Young Professionals Concert. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santenaz. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, I'll just touch on my recent trip to Sacramento on behalf of our city with this League of City. It was a great session out there advocating with our state legislators and our senators, and I'm happy to report that in my conversations with our senator, we were able to talk about some of our ongoing issues and concerns that we have on Caltrans property. As you all know, the state is seeing a deficit this year, so my ask was not monetary, it was really more focused on service and, and addressing some of these needs that we have in our, in our, in our districts, in our city, I mean, in, in the Caltrans district areas. With that, there was some, definitely some strong conversation on retail theft in our local communities. And most importantly, we had a a session regarding the Business Roundtable Tax Bill that, or amendment to the tax bill, and as you, as you may be aware, if it passes in November, a lot of what we've done in our efforts to ensure our parks and public safety would basically switch, and we would lose our tax revenue to do some of those services. And so that would be very, very drastic, not just for our city, but for our region and the entire state of California. But that, that's in a quick nutshell, some of the sessions that I attended and was educated on, and I think one of the other interesting ones was AI and AI's technology in, in government, in local government, and so that was quite interesting as well, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for that great report. Ms. Wendy Morris, you have something for us?
I do, I would like to ask that we, Mayor, I'd like to ask that we adjourn our meeting tonight in memory of Dorothy McCullough. Dorothy was a longtime Bellflower resident, and she passed away quietly at her home surrounded by her family at the age of a hundred and four. She was two months short of her hundred and fifth birthday. Dorothy was a loving mother. She was a loving, she is survived by her children, Diane Edie, her husband Ernie, her son, her daughter Lois Blazek, her husband Ernie, John McCullough, Jimmy McCullough, Linda Anderson and her husband Don, Deana McCullough, her daughter-in-law, her sister Donna Boone, and brother Ron Heinzma, along with many loving grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-great-grandchildren. She was preceded in death by her husband Elvin, who they named Bud, her son David, her grandson David Junior, her granddaughter Teresa, and seven siblings. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire McCullough family. She was a beautiful woman. I cherished her.
Tell us how long you knew her.
She lived in our building for thirty-three years, but I've only worked there for fifteen, but I did a lot of stuff with her, and up until a week before she passed, mentally, everything, she was, I'd see her in our laundry room washing her clothes still. She was, she just was amazing. Age just, age took its part, its part, but yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, and we'll adjourn in her memory. Mr. Dutton?
I said enough tonight.
I also have a person I'd like to honor and will adjourn in honor of Cynthia Monahan Robinera. Cindy Monahan Robinera was born December twenty-sixth, nineteen forty, passed away March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at the age of eighty-three. Born in Massachusetts. The family lived in Arlington, Boston, until nineteen forty-six, when they moved to a neighborhood outside of Boston. And they always spent their summers at Boston Harbor and on the Massachusetts coast. She earned a Bachelor of Science degree in nursing from Boston College, and a Master's degree in nursing from California State University in Los Angeles. And in her professional life, she was a nurse, a nursing educator, and a medical office manager. In nineteen sixty-six, Cindy met Roger Robinera while they were both working at the VA Hospital in Long Beach. They were married nineteen seventy. And Cindy and Roger attended, returned to Long Beach in nineteen seventy-four, where they raised their children, Caitlin and Michael. Cindy and Roger traveled extensively, spending time with their grandsons, Mason, Brennan, and Cooper. She also enjoyed doing community service and humanitarian projects to the Rotary Club of Bellflower. She was a loving sister, wife, mother, aunt, grandmother, and friend. Always optimistic, always willing to help others. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the Monahan Robinera family. I knew Cynthia as a member of the Rotary Club in Bellflower, and she and her husband, Dr. Robinera, who practiced for many years here in Bellflower as a surgeon, as a gastrointestinal doctor, just were the real heartbeat of our club, the Rotary Club. Just a real delight to know, a very organized lady. I attended her funeral services this past Saturday, and the priests announced that every part of that service had been designed and approved by her prior to her passing. And then when we got to the reception area, which was held at the Old Ranch Country Club, master ceremony said the same thing, the menu was chosen by her, what we were eating, what we were drinking, what music was being played, who was gonna speak. She didn't leave anything to chance, it was all by the numbers, so she was totally aware of what she wanted to have done at her services. So I'd like to honor the fact that she was an important part of our community, and, oh, one little story I enjoyed. She had a lot of charities that she funded, and the daughter announced that she didn't, as mother's health deteriorated, she could not write the checks to these charities, and she never, she kept it to herself as to what charity she was supporting. Many of them were through Rotary projects, and she said, I went over there one afternoon, and Mom gave me a list of forty-six entities that I needed to write checks to that she had been supporting for the last thirty years. So, but she never mentioned it, never said anything to anybody, and but until she had, no longer could write the check, that she announced that she had that kind of support for the, so just a heart of gold, a nice person, important in the community of like, of Bellflower, and and her husband being a great physician here in town. So we'll adjourn in, in memory of
Dorothy McCullough?
Dorothy McCullough, and Cynthia Monahan Robinera. We're adjourned to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council, which will be five-thirty PM, Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We're adjourned.